I'm going to call to order this meeting of the City of Wayne'sboro Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. If you guys all want to stand up. Laurie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'm slightly glad to do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with your God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we need to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does somebody want to?
I'll make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. It's a little hard for me to figure out where we're in. We're not in our usual positions. Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
I have.
Does anybody have any comments or anything? Somebody want to make a move to approve the minutes from the meeting held March 16th, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Everyone in favor of approving the minutes for the meeting held March 16th, 2021?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Do you have any comments from the public for items not on the agenda? I think these are all probably agenda people, aren't they? Okay, so, this is where I have to break down my instructions. We have a public hearing tonight on a request by Oceanside Properties II LLC for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in a historic district at 636 Chestnut Avenue, tax map number 55-1-26, lots 29 through 31. So, I think Luke will talk with us a little bit about this.
See, didn't I tell you guys you'd have the best seats in the house?
All right, it's good to see everyone in person again. This is our first meeting back in person since the start of COVID, so. The application tonight is for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in the Tree Streets Historic District. Picture it up there, it's located at 636 Chestnut Avenue. The Tree Streets Historic District was established in 2001. It has 595 structures in it, 454 of which are contributing, means that they are in some way historic and are adding to the character of that district, most of which were built between 1890 and 1950. Mr. Shaw, who's the retiring deputy city manager, if you'll not hurt, that's the-
That breaks my heart.
Is the one who got this district passed. Certificate of appropriateness is required to demolish any contributing structure in a historic district. And those are granted by the Planning Commission. I know most of the applications that we get are a recommendation that then goes to city council, though generally, city council follows you all as a recommendation. But this one does not go to city council, so this is, you're actually empowered to grant those certificates. There are alternative methods of recourse for property owners that want to demolish a structure and don't get certificate of appropriateness, but they are very difficult. It involves having to put the property up for sale and having to charge a fair market price. So, we actually have a property on another block of Chestnut where the Planning Commission denied a certificate of appropriateness. It was just a house that was actually in pretty good condition. And the applicant put it up for sale, saying, "You can't repair it." And somebody bought it and repaired it and flipped it, and it's now a very nice house on my block. But in this case, but you are able to vote to grant a certificate of appropriateness, which will allow the applicant to demolish the structure. So, 636 Chestnut is a historic home, about 100-year-old home, located on 600 block of Chestnut, obviously, beautiful house. It's been maintained in good condition. In the rear of the property is a carriage house and an attached garage and shed. And here is the listing from the nomination form that describes that property. It's a one-story, a story-and-a-half-frame building with four discernible phases of construction. The north end, which is this apartment here, which is also in good condition right now, was built in the early 1920s. The south sections, which is back here, were added in the late 1920s. Building has vinyl and novelty weatherboard siding, asphalt shingled gable and shed roof, poured concrete foundation, framed carport addition, and upstairs apartment above the north section of the shed dormer. So, that's from the nomination form. In this case, the applicant wishes to demolish the garage and the carport addition, but they will be preserving, obviously, the house, but also the main carriage house with the apartment in it. So, it's just the shed part with the garage that they want to demolish. The structure is in fair-to-poor condition. The applicant feels it would be too expensive and difficult to repair and that it doesn't serve a modern function in the current state. Additionally, it attracts a lot of loitering. It's become a nuisance to the surrounding property owners, which is why a number of them wrote in to support the application in this case. Had some difficulty securing it. But again, it is just for the garage section, not for the finished apartment area. As I mentioned in the staff report, it's a wood frame construction with wood siding on a concrete foundation. It's got an asphalt shingle lean-to roof with one gable at the south end and does have a sliding door up front, which I noted was probably the only really distinctive architectural feature. Otherwise, it's largely consistent with the building methods we would use today for framed buildings. Provided you with quite a few pictures here, if you want to get a good sense of what it looks like. This is the front of it. Again, this is up against the alley, facing the rear of the houses that front onto Wayne Avenue. And it is sort of mid-block, so it's really not visible from either of the side streets. You really have to go down the alley to see the structure. This is what the inside of the structure looks like. Here, as I noted, the sliding door was sort of the one distinct architectural feature of the property. And here it is from the other side, again, just a lean-to roof. So, the zoning code provides, in addition to the process for certificates of appropriateness, a number of criteria for you all to consider when you consider granting this ability to demolish. And I think that's a helpful thing to review as we look at this particular property. So, first of all is whether or not the building or structure embodies distinctive characteristics of a tight-period style, method of construction, et cetera, represents the work of a master, possesses high artistic values, or is associated with events. In this case, the structure is not associated with any particular historical event or persons. Architect is unknown, and it doesn't have any particular stylistic, notable stylistic characteristics from that period. As I said, it's fairly consistent with how framed buildings are constructed today. Secondly, is whether or not the building or structure contributes visible architectural value, provides historic continuity, properties within the same block, including both sides of the street. That's been a big issue, actually, in that other certificate of appropriateness that was denied, is the continuity of the block, you know, having that sense of enclosure as you drive down the block. You don't want sort of gap tooth in there. In this case, I noted in the staff report that I didn't feel that this particularly mattered to that and that it's in the alley behind the property. It's mid-block, far enough from both of the side streets. Doesn't really add to any sense of enclosure, it's just sort of on the alley. Third is whether the building or structure is of such age, authenticity, unusual, or uncommon design, et cetera, that it could be reproduced. And as I mentioned, the applicants provided you with, after the staff report, I passed it out just now, an estimate for what it would cost to replace the building. To my, again, this is up to you all, but to my eye, it doesn't strike me as a building that would be particularly difficult to reproduce with modern workmanship methods. Then fourth, specific plans for the site, for the structure or building be demolished. So, often, we do allow, the historic district is not set up to stop all development. If there was a big, newer, better building that was going to replace an older building, we can certainly allow that. In this case, they don't have any plans to replace the structure. They just intend to replace it with some landscaping and surface parking. So, that's, you can consider that. And then fifth, whether it's economically and practically feasible in the opinion of a qualified structural engineer or building trades professional to preserve or restore the structure. We didn't really get an estimate for preservation or restoration. Sort of just not, not a large enough project that I felt that it was really necessary that bring in an architect on it. But you can see, it's not in terrible condition right now. It could theoretically be restored. And whether they could make alternative, economically viable uses of the property or adapt it to a change in land use. And as I noted, you could not adapt it to a finished structure. So, the only uses that you could restore it to would be some kind of parking as a garage or storage, which it was originally constructed for. So, again, I would say that my recommendations on certificates of appropriateness are fairly mild, simply because you can see it, like, it's not like a big expertise thing that I have to bring to you. But I am recommending approval on the basis of everything I explained just now. It doesn't strike me as a property that has, you know, any particular architectural or historical event. You know, it was a functional building when it was constructed. It's fallen into some disrepair. It'd be fairly easy to replace with a similar, a building of similar architectural value. And it doesn't contribute to anything on the street. So, that's why I'm recommending approval in this case. Any questions for me? I believe the applicant is here, if the applicant would like to speak and ask any questions of them as well.
I think Mr. Jude did a nice job presenting our position on it. The owner recently acquired the property in November of 20-
Excuse me, one second. Could you give us your name and address, please? I'm sorry.
I'm Mike Myers, and I'm just representing Oceanside Properties. I am local.
Okay.
The owner acquired the property in November 2020. We've been doing some work on it. What we noticed pretty shortly after his acquisition that we had some regular residences overnight type of guests, if you will, and associated detritus with that, you know, alcohol, evidence of drug use, going and coming. We tried to secure the property on a number of occasions, but when the locks and the hasp were put on, people were just removing the plank siding and still gaining entry to the property. What we're really trying to do, we're certainly not in the business of destroying or destruction of historical property. We actually want to preserve the historic carriage house, and we want to be able, obviously, attract a better quality of tenant. And we feel like the best way to do that is not to have that attractive nuisance next door where we may be having some comings and goings that we have so far not been able to regulate or end. In talking to city police, they'd actually have to see someone on the property, catch them. And then, we're not usually there when those comings are going or are happening, so. Any questions for me that I can answer?
Well, you answered a question for me. I took the dogs by the property, and I saw those hasps with the locks, and they looked like they were just pried out.
Yes, sir.
And they were brand-new hasps on it, but, so it was pretty obviously someone was going in.
Yeah.
Is that attached to the carriage house, the garage?
It is. There is a, it's really attached by the roof line. So, what looks like, you know, I can't really tell, but that very end, this last condition up here, it looks like it has a gable roof on it. And what may have happened is hard to just to know, but it looked like they just roofed over from this one structure here from midway up the gable and then connected it to the carriage house. So, it connects into the side of the carriage.
So, there would be a minimal destruction of, I mean, you know, replacement of things to the carriage house, that wouldn't be-
The only thing would happen-
The integrity of that would not be changed?
No, the only part of that, on that side, where the roof of the shed runs into the carriage house, it is not sited to match the existing carriage house, which also matches the main house. We will side that with the matching vinyl to make it complete-looking.
You just want to take this out and turn it into extra parking?
Yes, sir.
And that includes the foundation or just the wood?
Foundation walls will stay, and actually, will kind of delineate some parking spaces.
Okay.
I have-
And we'll gravel that area over to make it, and landscape it, to make it look presentable.
I have a question. I was looking at your estimate hearing. As much as I hate to see any historical structure demolished, what lumber is that garage made out of? Is it hard pine?
Oak.
I honestly couldn't tell you. It looks like what I would call barnwood, typical barnwood, but-
And the only reason I ask, I see that the cost to tear it down is $12,000. But there are several companies here in the state that specialize in salvaging that period of lumber, especially if it's hard pine. I know E.T. Moore in Richmond is one of them, and I think there's two or three here in the valley, and-
The, I'm sorry, I just will say that the estimate from the builder there, Deckard Construction, will not be the people, if we're granted the certificate to do the demolition. We've engaged a local contracting company, Johnson, out of Stanton, and they have actually talked about repurposing some of the wood.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, if somebody's willing to buy it from you and come in and do the demo for the cost of the lumber-
And also, that sliding mechanism, Mr. Jude, that's something that people would like to reuse too.
Yeah, because I see the bar and all is up there, and I couldn't tell whether it's still one or two of the-
Just one of the doors.
Just one of the door hinges in there, but, yeah, I can understand the cost of lumber. I'm in the middle of a remodel myself. But, yeah, I was just curious if the owner has inquired about maybe selling, if it was. I don't, the only thing that might be Chestnut would be deciding on it from that era. And I know there are a lot of people that would love to have that Chestnut stripped of that lid, paint back down to its raw form, and that's worth a pretty penny. I didn't know if anybody had looked into those avenues. And I certainly agree that, yes, modern methods, you could quickly throw up another four-car garage up there, but it's not going to meet the period of the house, the period of the neighborhood.
Yeah, but it's not like some architecturally-designed shed either, you know?
No.
It's just somebody that knew how to build something. And, you know, you can find somebody else that knows how to build something now to do pretty much the same thing.
Yeah, but finding people that know how to build historically correct is very, very tough.
And frankly, the history that we've learned about the property in the previous-
It seems insignificant. There's nothing famous.
The history of tendency there, and especially the last three or four years in this, from our neighbors. It's been a pretty checkered history.
Yeah.
Probably a good bit of illegal activity. And frankly, we were worried, even if we undertook rebuilding with a garage, we may still have the same problem with intrusion that we're experiencing now.
Yeah.
It's hidden from the house, and only the people across the street. If they called the folks in the house, who are, I assume, all tenants, rental units-
Yes, sir.
You know, you won't have time to react to somebody damaging it again.
The neighbor at 648, she noted that, she said, you know, she sees her motion light, which faces that shed, going on and off a good bit during the overnight hours. She said, "I like to tell myself it's an animal, but I know it's not."
Did y'all just turn our two dogs loose?
Yeah, because I imagine if you rebuilt it into a garage or something, you'd have to put a security system out there. But I was just wondering if anybody had explored the possibility of reducing the cost of demo by selling the lumber and the building materials out there, if they are of-
Well, I believe the Johnson folks are planning to do some of that, and their cost for demolition was a little bit lower than that Deckard Construction cost.
Oh, okay. Well, does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? And we can ask him questions again after the public hearing, but I think we can probably move on to opening the public hearing. Thank you very much for your information. Okay, so I hereby open the public hearing for- Public hearing for the request for, by Oceanside Properties II LLC for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in a historic district at 636 Chestnut Avenue, tax map number 55-1-26, lots 29 through 31.
Move to approve? Oh, wait, is that too soon?
You've got to close the-
I've got to wait until I close the public hearing.
Really quick, and I also have to, because we received written comment, I also have to mention that as well, with our COVID guidelines. So, we received two written comments. One from Melinda Ferguson, who owns the house across the alley from 636 Chestnut Avenue. Says, "We've been here 16 years. The current owner would like to take down the sheds attached to the outbuilding in back, writing with my wholehearted support of this plan. Sheds are in poor condition from previous owners. In our time here, they have been a gathering place for the homeless, the site of freelance transactions, and even a public latrine. They do not appear to be original to the main house. Please seriously consider granting permission for the removal." And then we also have a petition signed by two other neighbors saying that they declare their support for the demolition of the shed and that it's become an attractive nuisance.
Okay, and if anyone in the audience wants to approach the podium, I just ask that you give us your name and address when you do. And we don't have call-ins today, do we? Okay.
Yeah, no call-in, so you're good.
Okay, so I think we can close the public hearing. And then, do we need to have any questions or comments or discussion amongst ourselves?
I think this demolition will greatly improve the alley.
I think so too, and I think safety is, homeowner's safety is at a premium in this day and age. And my house backs up to an alley too, so I do, I have motion lights that go on every time somebody goes through the alley for the very same reason, so. I think that I-
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes, you, does somebody want to make a motion to approve a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a contributing structure in a historic district at 636 Chestnut Avenue, tax map number 55-1-26, lots 29 through 31?
So moved.
Somebody want to second it?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got lots of seconds tonight. So, everyone in favor in granting the aforementioned certificate appropriateness to demolish the building, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so, looks like the certificate is on its way.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jude.
And number six on our agenda is an update on smart-scale applications and CDBG entitlement projects.
Yes, I could not remember if we had said this for sure last meeting, but we did get three of our four smart-scale applications totaling about $20 million in award monies, which was definitely proportionally more than any other city our size. And so, that includes a project on Broad Street, a major streetscape project, the West Main Street project, which would be, I think, a really significant safety improvement. And as you all have heard, we had another fatal accident out there in the meantime as well. And then also, a project to, on Rossar Avenue that will help with traffic flow, so.
Did you say that it would take several years to initiate that?
It'll be quite a long time, so we, we are currently, the, there have been, because of significant delays, we are still not at construction of the Southern Connector, which was the city's smart-scale award in 2014. We are coming up quickly on construction of the 2018 round of smart-scale grants. They were supposed to be 2024, but because of some influx of cash, the states moved them up. So, East Main Street and the 13th and Rossar roundabout will probably go to design next year. And then these projects would probably be scheduled for 2027.
Does safety concerns push that up a little bit?
I actually sat on the CTB's regional call and provided public comment. Well, a lot of planners will provide comment to the CTB and comment to that effect, that that was an urgent need for us. Yeah, I mean, it's gruesome, but we can calculate a rate, you know, that in another six years, likely to see probably two more deaths during that period.
It's kind of urgent.
Yeah, it's kind of urgent. It's a significant problem, so.
Well, Luke, thanks to you and those who are formerly your staff, to for all your hard work on those.
Yes.
And thanks to Jim Powers from Public Works as well, for his work on that. And we're also coming up on CDBG entitlement. Unfortunately, I did not get as far as I meant to in preparing the presentation on this, but I think next meeting, I'll prepare for you all. We need to schedule out CDBG projects for the future, and I would love to run that by Planning Commission. And then, item number seven, might be skipping two.
You keep clipping right along there, Luke.
Yes. As you all recall, we passed a subdivision ordinance revision that reduced the width of the streets. The first developments to be constructed with the new street widths are Claybrook, the revised Claybrook section, and Evershire. And we have had something of an issue, if you all hear about it, I don't know if you've been contacted, but the signage, the way that it all worked out between fire code and engineering and everything was that there had to be no parking signs on one side of the street because of the width to maintain the fire-clear zone. And the signs were not installed until after the homes were sold and the owners had moved in. And so, those were just installed at the end of the developer's, you know, bond period. And it's created quite a stir out there. So, that may be likely to show up on your radar at some point if people complain to you. And we're going to try to, in the future subdivisions, ensure that those signs are in ahead of time or something, but if you would like to drive out there and see what it looks like or how it's working and reconsider, you know, what we want to do with street widths in the future. Again, I, as a planner, love narrower streets. They tend to be good for safe, both safety and environment and everything else, but, and they're cheaper to maintain. But definitely, some folks, some of the complainants have raised noise about whether we should widen the street requirement again, so.
Is this at Evershire?
This is in Claybrook.
Claybrook, okay.
Yeah, so if you might want to peek at that in case that issue comes up. I will not be bringing you a motion to do so, but. The streets are built.
Yeah, the streets are done.
Yeah.
And I think we've done the same streets over behind Kmart, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, same streets, yeah, so that's what it'll look like behind, or behind Walmart, yeah.
Behind Walmart.
How much wider would the street have to be in order to make it convey to what is necessary?
For two sides of parallel parking?
Yeah.
Seven more feet, probably.
Seven more feet?
Yeah, yeah, in some places, the, you know, the narrower drive aisle is acceptable, and you can have parking on both sides, and that, like, it slows the traffic down. But the fire code requires a 20-foot clear zone for the fire truck to be able to get through quickly, and so that, that's what results in us having to have only the parking one side, which is-
Is that something the builder would consider?
The builders will build as narrow a street as we will allow them to build. So, that's, it's very much up to us.
Have we allowed anything yet? Didn't we allow it?
We allowed it.
We went there. We went there.
We went there, yeah, and it happened, so it's-
It went because they're putting sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
And in general, most of the localities around us allow much narrower streets. It's kind of the, like I said, you save on your, you're reducing your stormwater runoff. It's cheaper for the developer to build. They don't want to build a wide street. We don't want to maintain a wide street. We get the same amount of VDOT funding per mile on the street, regardless of whether it's 40 feet to pave or 27 feet to pave. And so, we have very wide streets throughout the city, wider than all the other localities around us. And so, and that's nice for parking and for traveling fast in your car, but it's not nice for maintaining or for water runoff or if you would like people to go slower. I get a lot of complaints about speeding in the historic parts of the city. So, yeah, they're all factors, but, you know, it's just a lot of stuff to weigh and-
I'm all about the stuff.
What kind of community do you want to live in?
Yeah.
Luke was the developer or the city responsible for putting up the no-parking sign?
The developer was.
The builders or whoever.
Yeah. I almost wonder if we need to have a code amendment or something saying that, like, signage for no parking or something like that must be constructed, can't be bonded.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Generally, we allow the developer to bond improvement.
Don't give them a certificate of occupancy.
I think that's a great idea.
Don't give them a certificate of occupancy until those signs are up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People know what they're buying.
And I guess we could put that in the motion to approve.
That's true, we could. Actually, you could put that on, you could attach that to a subdivision.
Yeah, well, it'd be easier, though, if we just made a zoning code text amendment, and then we wouldn't have to attach it to every single proof.
Not that I think- Truth, yeah. Not that I think you'll have that many more massive subdivisions in the city. There could be a few more. There's a few big properties.
We're going to run up real estate.
I don't know, there's 54 acres at the end of Fifth Street up for sale right now that-
That's true.
And there is only one way in and one way out.
Yes. Incidentally, that area up there is, is our biggest, like, bottleneck spot. We have about 130 homes on one entrance at the reservoir, and that could be solved if a small section of Kirby was filled in. So we've had that in our plans for a while. And Habitat for Humanity owns a bunch of property right around there, and they've recently, recently approached the city about developing that property. And so we've talked about possibly a CDBG project with them that would help, help their property and give us that connection to get-
It would be nice if Kirby Avenue would connect down the, down the hill from my house.
Yes. That's all that I have on updates. I have one other update that is not on the agenda. Great. I would love to introduce you all to Ms. Alessand Tombarche. She's right here. She had spent 10 years working for Conservation Partners. She's from Lexington, Virginia, nearby here, doing GIS work and processing conservation easements. And then she decided that she thought it was more interesting what the planners were doing that she was working with. So she decided to go back to school for planning. And she is just graduated a week ago from Virginia Tech. She's been interning with the Berkeley Group, which is a major planning consulting firm around here, and also with the New River Economic Development, what's the name of it?
New River Valley Regional-
New River Valley Regional Commission. That's, that's their PDC. And we have just hired her as the new associate planner for the city of Waynesboro.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I also have an email, I got an email from the director of the Chamber of Commerce down there with the New River Valley Commission. It was actually not sent to us. It was sent to somebody up here that he knew, and he just said how amazing she had been working for them, and sad that she was coming up here. So, please welcome Alessand.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Are you moving to Waynesboro?
Um, I hope so. Right now, it's still not letting me in.
Uh-huh. Great. Great.
You better move up here before everybody from New York buys up all the houses.
Hurry up.
Lexington's nice, too.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, even the vacant lots are being bought up and built on.
It's great.
Great. Anybody else have anything that they need to say?
No, it's just good to see everybody back in person, you know?
Yes, it is. Good to be back in person.
Yes. We are still dealing with sort of day-to-day changes in what OSHA says and the governor says and everything, but it seems like the direction it's moving, it's kind of the same as at the beginning of the pandemic. Everything's changing quickly. But I imagine by next meeting, probably all the restrictions will be lifted at the rate.
Yeah.
We went into Target last night wearing our mask, and we start walking around, and all the employees have their mask hanging on their badge. And I stopped one, and I said, no, no mask in Target? No, CDC says we don't have to. So we just carry them with us?
Yeah. You know, Target first said they were going to require it. Walmart said they weren't going to require it.
Exactly.
And in days, Target changed their mind.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. You would think after all this time, we'd have our act together.
Yep.
But, oh, well.
Too many, too many issues that are not health-related at stake. Everyone's got an agenda.
Everybody's going feral. Next month, you'll have a seat up here at the big table.
There'll probably be no one in the audience.
And nobody out here to talk to.
Now, we have crowds. Come on.
Well, that's true. Let's do something controversial. We're going to spice it up.
You all, you're all a very, very agreeable planning commission. We need some, we need some troublemakers.
That's outrageous.
Well, you know, I tried to, I was going to shake things, but let's officially end the meeting. I want to, can we close this meeting of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021?
I'll make a motion that we close.
I'll second.
During the closing meeting.
Aye.
Well, I was-